All right. Hey, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to the Oakland Town of Oakland Commission meeting for February 11th, 2025. If everybody could please stand for the pledge and invocation. All right, Elise.
Hey, roll call Commissioner Keller. Commissioner McMullen. Vice Mayor Satterfield.
President.
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
And Commissioner Ramos is not here, but we have a quorum.
All right. Wish Commissioner Ramos a speedy recovery. Real quick, also on that roll call, I want to introduce Lou. So if you see Lou walking around, Lou's our new Public Information Officer. Is there another title?
Public Information Officer.
Community. That's right, community outreach. So if you guys see Lou walking around, taking pictures, or if you want to go and visit Lou, or if you have something coming up or an event, stop by and see Lou. He's gonna start setting up our events. So he takes over for Jessica Lovejoy as of Monday of this week. So congratulations, second day. Congratulations.
And real quick, John Hammerstein, you need to get together with him because this is the car guy. And those who don't know, that very successful car show that we had last year was the original idea of John brought it to me, and it couldn't have been any more of a success. So we're ready to roll with three or two of that.
All right. So an item that is not on the agenda that we need to do right now is an issue in the town. So I'd like to pass the gavel over to Vice Mayor, if you'll take it.
All right. And as the mayor said, we have something on the agenda, and I'm going to call for a motion.
Okay, so here's the issue. We had the unfortunate event to accept the resignation of our town manager today. And we have, we discussed it today with him. We ended up asking, he asked to resign. We accept his resignation. There is a letter that is going out, gentlemen, and in 48 hours, he is to return that resignation letter back to us. If in the event that he does not turn that letter back into us within 48 hours, then I would recommend that we terminate at that point in time. Any questions?
And that letter is...
It's a straight resignation.
Straight resignation.
And inside that resignation letter, but...
It is a resignation letter that also has provisions for release of the town so that they're, you know, it's a clean break essentially. And it provides him with the compensation as provided in his agreement. And the termination or the signing of the agreement would have the same financial impact on the town either way. But so that there is no gap in the position, what my recommendation was, was a motion just as was made by the mayor with two parts to it that would be voted on at one time, that it would automatically become a termination if we do not get the resignation back.
Correct. So.
Given that, then I will call for the motion.
So I have a little bit of unreadiness because I really want us to make sure that we're doing due diligence on both sides. We haven't received a letter from him. That's my only concern right now. So something was said verbally, but we don't have anything that was in writing yet?
It was, yeah, it was, it was discussed verbally along with a witness in the room as well. The chief was present. And because of timing and every, we want to give him time to look through the documents that were provided to him and to read those. In that meeting, it was verbally agreed to that he would resign with the letter.
Yeah, but we're being asked to agree to something, and we don't have all of them. I mean, I understand it could be a lot of issues on both sides. I mean, really on one side or however you want to put it. My unreadiness is hearing or doing some kind of investigation. I don't dealt with HR many years. And that's, that's my only unreadiness. I'm not saying anyone on either side has done anything wrong. I'm sitting here hearing about it, you know, really fresh. And then I'm hearing that we are to decide to terminate. So, you know, if you ask me, if somebody wants to pull me off and say, hey, why did he get terminated? And I will say, I don't know. That's my challenge as I process this at this moment. I'm not advocating for either side. I'm just worried as relates to us not hearing all sides.
Becky?
Yes, it's my understanding that he did voluntarily resign. And just because he hasn't gotten the paperwork back to us, we need to, he may change his mind three weeks from now and not get it back to us. So there needs to be some finality with regard to...
So could we go through something like that? I mean, does it have to be 48 hours? Could it be two weeks by the next meeting? I'm not, I don't want to put us in a position where we found to be, you know, some kind of negligence on our side. I get what you're saying. For me, you're asking me to vote on something and all, I don't know what happened on ours. I just know I might see a little bit on one side. But I think my challenge is, does it have to be 48 hours? Because you just mentioned that. And I know you just mentioned that he may come back and say, hey, at the moment, I might want to discuss this with the town staff. I'm just saying, that's just my only unreadiness because I want to make sure we have all information. Because if I vote on it, I'm voting on something that have no limit. That's my challenge.
Becky, do we?
That's my...
Do we, I'm trying to keep the minor matters private as I can without sharing the details. I think for everyone in the town's sake. So I'm talking to the town attorney, and I'm talking to the town attorney, and I have been in communication with him and texted him the letter from the town attorney and asked him to send that back to me. It's just a, I think, a way that we can progress forward from the conversations and the meetings that we had there today, this afternoon. I get what you're saying. A hundred percent agree. You know, you're, you're asking to, you're, you're being asked to, to have a position on something that you really, really are not, you've heard some things, but you don't know the details and stuff. I...
And I should mention that under the town charter, the mayor is vested with the authority to recommend this.
Well, usually when it's a recommendation, we get some context, full context.
Yeah. So what was?
You know, I'm not trying to get anybody.
No.
Never see anything in it.
Yeah. What was, what was given to me was a document, anonymous document that I couldn't pass around, couldn't share with you. It's just breaking sunshine law. So that's the...
Well, we're at a point where Andy did do a resignation, correct?
Correct.
So that really is what we're voting on is accepting his resignation. The document, we can kind of do whichever way we want to go with that. Yeah.
And just to Joseph's point, is there any, I mean, are we covered legally? Our bases covered? And, you know, we proceed with, basically, you're asking us to make a motion that if we don't receive the letter, then within 48 hours, then he's terminated. So are we covered legally in that situation? Are bases covered?
Yes. I mean, there are never any, any guarantees in the law, just like in medicine. I mean, it's, there, there just aren't any guarantees. But yes, we're as covered as, as well as we could be.
So can I, can I just say this? The difference between the option given to him to resonate or to send his resignation in versus us doing a termination is to help him save face in the future. Because when you go to apply for a job, that's the thing. So that's why we are, I am making the motion or the suggestion that we, recommendation that we accept his resignation from him and give him 48 hours to present that resignation. If in fact, he changes his mind within the 48 hours, he is then terminated regardless. He's, he's, he's gone. And then the, the same package still applies. It's just on him.
First to move forward.
Yeah, we have to move forward. We have to.
My only challenger issue is the latter. If he, if he mentioned one and then he hasn't submitted, I'm not questioning anyone's judgment who has full lens. I'm just saying, I have zero lens on it on both sides, a full comprehensive lens on it. I would, you know, I, I understand if that's what was presented, but the 48 hours, that's the only problem. As far as that, if it, if it, if it doesn't get accepted or sent in, we have to move forward. We've been in this position before. And I, you know, when we was in the position before, we had a lot of factual things that happened that I like, oh, yeah, we need to move with this case, you know, without hate because of all of the elements from internal to both sides. This piece, I only know part of, you said it's anonymous letter, only know a part. I just want us to do our, our due diligence. And if he says, hey, I'm gone, that's fine. But I have not seen a letter of resignation. And then if we say we're going to terminate him if he doesn't return it within 40, I mean, who came up with that 48 hours? Why does it have to be 48 hours? And I, and I want us to protect our, our employees. Trust me, they, they do, they hear every single day. They probably got all the stories that we don't even have men to. I'm just expressing how I feel about asking me to vote on something, and I just don't have...
There, there really is no magic to the 48 hours.
Okay.
So you might want to make a motion to amend the motion to have it be seven days, which would give him plenty of time.
I feel, I feel better with that. I really do. I mean, I hope people don't feel, I want everybody to be protected. But I really want us to do, you know, and I, and I want to see more. I want to hear more. So I can feel comfortable. My, I walk out and someone stops me and say, hey, man, what happened? I'm not gonna give no details, but I can say, you know, with all my feelings, yeah, that was the best suggestion.
And, and I don't know how it will vote, but you could say, you know, I, I would like to amend the motion to have changed the, the 48 hours to seven days. And then if you get a second, and then you vote on that amendment, and then you would vote on the full motion.
Okay.
Personally, I, I would like us to move forward. That's my feeling, that based on what I've been informed of, I feel like we need to move forward. And I'm okay with, I'm okay with...
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if, I, I mean, because I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion. But I don't want to, I don't know if it matters if, how we do that. So.
And I will say, Commissioner, I would not have brought this forward if I didn't feel it was an issue, a very valid issue.
I trust your judgment. I'm just saying how.
And I will say that I agree with it, Commissioner.
Okay.
All right. So we need to either put the motion at the table or, because you haven't actually made the motion yet. So, it's your pleasure.
You do need to take public comment.
Oh, okay. All right. With that, then we're done right now. I will turn it over to anybody in the audience. Have anything they would like to say? Yes, ma'am. Name, address, serial number, you know?
Good evening, everyone. Yumiko Motley, 2112, over to our chair. Based on the information presented to us, it is my understanding that it was a verbal and while witnessed. The motion on the table appears to say without something formally. And so I'm lacking understanding, are we requesting that he provide a formal written resignation? And that's absent the facts and circumstances that you all are privy to that we are not. And so what I'm saying is, if you've received a resignation, in my perspective as a resident, it's not a formal resignation because we don't have the benefit of a formal correspondence individual saying, effective this date, I am resigning from the Town of Oakland, effective two weeks from now, or whatever that case may be, which will trigger other processes that are in the county charter as it relates to his contractual agreement and arrangement. And so what my request would be is that we receive a formal resignation within that time period, if it's the understanding that that is the case. And then proceed from that moment to give an additional timeframe for termination if you're providing him with documentary information to respond or react to based on the terms of his contract and agreement.
Noted.
Thank you, ma'am.
And, and I understand where you're coming from on that.
I just don't think we have enough information as a body of residents to know the factual circumstances. And I understand they may be private, but we would want to have a formal letter of resignation to put on record in the town that, that coming from that individual, this is his resignation effective here. And then the town would move forward with whatever processes and procedures are in the charter or the contract will agree.
Right. So the other option on that would be if we, I communicated with him today, gave him a deadline to have his resignation letter to me by the end of the day before this meeting starts.
Okay. And I think the manner in which it was presented, it did not, it did not resonate with me that that was the timeframe he was given to provide that. It was just saying...
In, in the meeting this morning, this afternoon with the, with the chief, that resignation was, again, asked to be in before this meeting. The town attorney has been communicated to, the town attorney drafted a resignation letter that essentially protects the town, and we amicably split is, is what it is. If we do not, and we don't want to give it a time period to wait for that actual resignation letter to come, then change our motion to go right to termination. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Sorry.
All right. Here and then, I will bring it back to the table. Any other comments? Then that's, we're ready for a motion. It's a pleasure.
I, I'd make the motion that we accept the former town manager's resignation letter, give him 48 hours to submit that to us. If not, we move forward with a termination.
And I'll second that motion.
Got a motion, a second. Do we have any other? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Okay. The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Okay. There's a, there's a second part to this, too. Second part is, I'd make the motion to appoint Elise as the interim town manager until such time a permanent town manager can be found.
And I'll second that motion.
Same motion and a second. Any others? All in favor? Oh, okay. Sorry. I will close us and bring it to the public. Anybody out there have anything? Not all of them. All right. I will bring it back to the table for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. All ayes have it. And we have our interim town manager. With that, I will turn the gavel back over to the mayor. Kind of meet.
All right.
It's your gavel.
We don't need it. All right. So moving on. So we're going to move on to some Police Department awards. Chief, come on, do something good for us.
How's that working out, Chief?
So if I could have Corporal Justin Gao step forward, please. While he's stepping forward, on November 23rd, 2024, Corporal Gao assisted a motorist on State Road 50 at the Lake County line. The female motorist's vehicle had a flat tire, and her vehicle was disabled on State Road 50 for several hours. Attempting to change the motorist's tire for her, Corporal Gao recognized that she did not have a tire iron required to operate the jack, which was with the vehicle. Corporal Gao went to a nearby store and purchased a floor jack, allowing the tire to be safely changed and ensure the stranded motorist was able to get off State Road 50, which certainly presented a safety issue. For his willingness to think outside the box as well as purchase items for a stranded motorist, Corporal Gao is hereby awarded the Oakland Police Department's Community Service Award. Okay, now I need a long list. I have Officer Samaria Lake, Jason Hayes, Kyle Thompson's not here, Reyna Lys Rojas, Sean Dozier, Corporal Gao, Roger Fisher, Sergeant Barry Strakowski, Lieutenant Rene Castro, Executive Assistant Stacy Quinn, and Administrative Assistant Kelly Sims. This is a large group, and I'll read fast. On December 20th, 2024, the above members of the Oakland Police Department participated in Shop with a Cop at the Walmart in Claremont, Florida. This event has been posted, or has been hosted by Claremont PD with the Oakland Police Department being invited to participate since 2022. This year, Oakland PD raised enough money to sponsor 21 children from the Town of Oakland and took them on a holiday shopping spree, with each child receiving $100. Lieutenant Rene Castro organized the event and ensured that each child would have been paired with an Oakland PD member. Stacy Quinn and Kelly Sims handled many of the tasks which resulted in the event being a success to include, but are not limited to, completion of tax-exempt forms, check-in and assigned each child upon arrival, monitoring all purchases to cover unexpected problems, and address gift card issues through specific record-keeping and interaction with the Walmart staff. The remaining officers accompanied the children who participated in the event through the store, making sure each child enjoyed the event. Many of these employees were off-shift and participated in this event on their own time. For their selflessness and willingness to participate in this valuable event, the above officers are hereby issued or awarded the Oakland Police Department's Community Service Award. Okay. Next, I need Officer Reyna Lys Rojas. Officer Rojas has been a reserve officer for the Oakland Police Department since 2021. Although she works a full-time job and raises two wonderful daughters outside of the department, Officer Rojas continues to keep her commitment to her reserve hours with the department. During the fourth quarter of 2024, Officer Rojas's statistic rivaled, if not exceeded, those numbers achieved by many of the full-time officers. With an emphasis on traffic enforcement as well as community engagement, Officer Rojas has made it a personal goal to look after multiple families who reside in the Lake Johns motel along State Road 50. During the Christmas holiday season, Officer Rojas identified approximately 12 children within the motel whose families needed financial assistance. Officer Rojas obtained toys and clothing for each child, making a tremendous impact with each family. She was able to accomplish this by using, utilizing her own money as well as some resources from the department. Officer Rojas rarely misses the town event, volunteering to assist and recognize, recognizing special dates such as birthdays, holidays, and anniversaries of her coworkers. As the department prepared for the arrival of Hurricane Milton, Officer Rojas went grocery shopping for her coworkers, who would be spending an unknown period of time sleeping at the department. Unable to remain at the PD due to her parental responsibilities, Officer Rojas made sure that we were taken care of, buying snacks and toiletries for the locker rooms. For her consistent, superior work, work product in the line of duty, unwavering support of the residents of the Town of Oakland, as well as her willingness to take care of her coworkers when needed, Officer Reyna Lys Rojas is awarded Oakland Police Department's Officer of the Quarter for the fourth quarter of 2024. Okay. Last, but certainly not least, if I could have SRO Samaria Lake. Officer Samaria Lake has been with the Oakland Police Department since 2022. Prior to coming to Oakland, she served as a police officer and homicide detective in the island of St. Croix. Since coming to the Oakland Police Department, Officer Lake has been nothing short of phenomenal, greeting citizens and coworkers with an infectious smile and kind words. During the 2024 calendar year, Officer Lake was transferred to the School Resource Officer position at the Oakland Avenue Charter School. It didn't take long for Officer Lake to find her passion for engaging and making a positive impact on the children of OACS. Officer Lake immediately opened up lines of communication between herself and school staff, demonstrating her dedication to the safety of the children. Since coming to the school, Officer Lake can often be seen walking the property, delivering smiles, high fives, and occasional, and occasionally dressed as a superhero. Many parents have made it a point to deliver kind words of praise in regard to the interaction and caring nature she displays on a daily basis. In addition, I've received several phone calls and emails from staff at the school praising Officer Lake for her overall ability to be valued, a valued part of the charter school. Outside of her regular assignment, Officer Lake constantly makes inquiries about how she can be better as an officer. She's attended many classes this year, trying to build her skill set as a police officer and as a leader. Officer Lake has made many conversations about her plans for the future, and it is apparent with her commitment and drive for excellence has been a major contributing factor in making those around her better. For her overwhelming dedication, commitment, and positive attitude towards her assignment, the students and staff at the Oakland Avenue Charter School, and her drive to surround others with positivity, Officer Lake is awarded the Oakland Police Department's Officer of the Year for 2024. So obviously, this, every quarter when we do these awards, it's like the best thing to do as the chief of police. And I will tell you that people like Officer Lake know what makes this place great as it is. We had a meeting when I first got hired here, and I asked her what her future plans are. And she said she is going to be chief of police here someday. And I gotta tell you, I told her not till I'm done, but her, her work product, her attitude, everything she does, she is on track to continue making Oakland as great as it is. But thank you for your time. I read as fast as I could.
Thanks, Chief. Well, but Chief, before you sit down, before you sit down, I just want to congratulate the, the Oakland Police Department for winning two years in a row, the Boy Scouts Pine Wood Derby. So I, I, I put a, I put a car in the race, and the only reason I put a car in the race was try to beat him. It, it, yeah, yeah. It wasn't, I, I try to use physics, I try to use engineering, and it, I think you greased your wheels and had weights in there. But good job to Mike, good job, Chief, good job to everybody who attended. That was a great event. That was a fun event for the Boy Scouts. Very excited. I'll get you next year. Okay. All right. Real quick, I need to bring it back here for the previous topic we talked about. Just received a message, and it's preferred that we proceed with... Just received a message, and it's preferred that we proceed with commission to go ahead and terminate without cause. So with that, Mike, or can I, or? Or do we?
Just pass the gavel.
Pass the gavel.
We got the gavel, so new information has come to light. What now?
Excuse me. That's an important public record, so forward it, will you?
Sure.
Do we need?
I, so.
Okay.
And Andy has texted to Shane this statement. I feel at this point, I would prefer the commission to go ahead, terminate me without cause. Given that, I will.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Bye, guys. I'm gonna, I'll, I'll make the motion to terminate the town manager without cause.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah.
I'll need to go back. If it wants more, I'll ask public for any public comments. None, I will bring it back to the table for the vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right.
Pass the gavel back.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on, on the agenda is the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is minutes from the one twenty-eight twenty-five Town Commission Work Session, minutes to the one twenty-eight twenty-five Town Commission Regular Meeting, the Oakland Avenue Charter School, School Calendar Approval, and a memorandum of understanding for the St. Cloud Police Department. Any questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, next. Charter Review Committee Appointments. Please.
So on January twenty-eighth, we'd had four appointments with Commissioner Keller having an additional meeting. I'm gonna now ask her who her appointee is to the Charter Review Committee.
I would like to appoint Kevin Cox to the Charter Review Committee.
Hey, Kevin Cox. And we're working to start setting up those meetings in March. I'm just waiting to hear back from a few people, and then we will get going with that committee.
Great, thank you. Okay, next on the item is the Town Commission Appointment to the Oakland Nature Preserve Board of Directors. As you know, with the resignation of Commissioner Pollan, we have to appoint a member of the commission to represent. Any discussion on that?
Doesn't have to be.
That's correct. You can. Yep, you can.
I actually met with Nicole today and had a conversation with her. Like many of us, I feel like the nature preserve is one of the amazing things of our town, and I think it's really important that the town is represented well on their board. Actually, the interesting thing is that there's actually two positions that need to be. There's the town manager is one of the positions, or their designee, or commissioner, or their designee. The conversation I had with Nicole was that they did reduce their board from like twenty people to thirteen a few years back. So one of the things we talked about, which they would have to change their MOU with the town, is whether we need actually two people or one person. While I feel very strongly about the nature preserve, I'm not sure I'm the best that is the person to be on that board. I'm not an outdoorsy kind of gal.
Oh, do you have to pull weeds and?
Between mosquito bites and snakes, it's not my thing, and I just would not want to not do it justice. So I'm, I would like to, if, if there's not someone else that's interested, I'd like to maybe have some more time to see if we can find an appropriate designee for that. I mean, I know Nicole is interested in getting someone, but as I had with her today, we agreed that, you know, we want to make. Yeah, that's something that they would have to change their MOU with the town. So if that's something that they want to do, they'd have to do that on their board. So.
Do we want to table this to, two meetings from now?
Yeah, we can do that. That should be no problem. I also had that same conversation with Nicole about looking at her MOU together, seeing if we need two or one.
How about you, like snake and, you know, like gal?
I am. Not the snake, but mosquitoes, I can do. So I'm, I'm planning in the, in the interim, as interim, to attend whatever meetings I can.
Right, let's, let's table that for two meetings from now. That works for everybody?
So I make a motion that we table the selection of the appointment of an OMP Board of Director for two meetings from now.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. Moving on to Kimley Hornscope of Services, that will, this is going, is, will be removed from the agenda item tonight. There is still some due diligence that is being done on that before we are ready to present that to the commission. Okay, so ordinances, we're moving on to ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash oh-two. This is the second public hearing for the E-Detection.
Okay, for the record, this is ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-two, second public hearing in ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, adopting section sixty-two dash ninety-five through sixty-two dash one hundred of Article IV of Chapter sixty-two of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Oakland, Florida, creating a new Article Five, School Zone Speed Enforcement of Chapter sixty-two, Traffic and Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Oakland, Florida, adopting section sixty-two dash one zero one through sixty-two dash one 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 of Article Five of Chapter sixty-two of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Oakland, Florida, Providing for Purpose Intent Legislative Findings and Definitions, Establishing a School Zone Speed Enforcement Program in Authorizing the Use of School Zone Speed Detection Systems Within the Town, Providing for Program Administration, Program Implementation Requirements, and Designation of School Zones, Providing for Enforcement Procedures, Collection of Evidence, Public Records Retention Requirements, Annual Reporting Requirements, and Remittance and Use of Collected Fines and Costs, Providing for Reservation of Certain Code Section Numbers, and Providing for Codification, Conflict Severability, and an Effective Date.
Okay, any discussion on the table? All right, this is a public hearing. We'll open it up to the public. Any questions or comments from the public? Nope, hearing none. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back, and we'll entertain a motion. Motion made, second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. All right, moving on to Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash zero-four. This is to appoint a magistrate.
So this is Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash zero-four, Resolution of the Town Commission of the Town of Oakland, Florida, Designating the Special Magistrate as the local hearing officer for purposes of school zone, school speed zone enforcement under Article Five, School Speed Zone Enforcement of Chapter sixty-two, Traffic and Vehicles of the Town of Oakland Code of Ordinances, Designating the town clerk to serve as the clerk to the local hearing officer, making findings and providing for an effective date.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Yeah, if we can make that a little fair, who would be the?
The special magistrate who currently serves over the code enforcement board has, has agreed to.
Those happen here?
Yes.
They come here. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, we'll open it up to public. Any questions from the public? Oh, we'll close it, bring it back to the table, and entertain a motion.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so this is the point in the meeting where we bring it to public forum, and this is when anyone can talk about anything that is not on the agenda. Yes, ma'am, come on up. You're not shy.
Jill Cox, three oh-one North Walker Street. I attended the Town's Commission meeting when the representative from the Apogee Gas Company spoke and spoke and about bringing their gas to Oakland. I have eight appliances that are propane, and I was excited that this was happening. Who decided the route that the gas line goes down? Because if you live on one of these streets, the hookup is free. I live on one house away from this pipe. So I had the Apogee Gas representative come to my house, and I showed him, you know, I have a five-hundred gallon propane tank, and so we use gas. He informed me that the gas pipe from the Bryley Avenue, and I'm one house down from that, will cost me eleven thousand dollars to get it to my house. And I just think somehow we messed this process up.
Hmm, okay. I will say that I do know, Jill, that the, like Apogee Gas is installing the lines. I do see them running down Tub Street, and they are running down streets to feed Bryley, as well as Star Street to feed Oakland Park as well. And they are trying to hit neighborhoods. They have come to my house and said, it's, it's, we get enough people signed up, we'll make it available to you at a, at a, this kind of rate. I, I have no issue myself talking to, like, Apogee Gas for you, and just trying to see if we can get some answers for you. So I can certainly take that task on and talk to them. Okay, anyone else? Oh, hey, John.
Three oh-six East Avenue. So just an update on the roads. Not been diligent to be up here to hear what's going on. Heard some things, but I'd like to know, is there a plan? Is there someone in charge of that? What's, what's kind of going on with the, you know, the dust issue?
So we have tested out two roads now with asphalt millings. Essentially, it's recycled asphalt that comes off of a parking lot or a road or anything like that. The one is in between Daniels and, it's on gully between Daniels and, road escapes me, right, Nixon. Nixon, that works. And then we just did another test road across south of Oakland Avenue on, oh, that's right, same distance from Star to Daniels. I believe there's a, another load that has to come in to finish that up. I drove down it the other day. I drove down it again today without breaking the speed limit. I went fast, and yeah, it did not kick up hardly any dust with that. So we're hoping that that might be the solution to put down that material throughout the roads. There is another material that was put down to try some different materials. I haven't seen the results of, of that one yet, but I can tell you, Mike Parker in Public Works is working on this, and, and Nathan as well, trying to get that solution. To get it.
Just to the point, we're still trying to decide what material to use.
Yeah, I think if this material works, John, I think this is the go-to material to use throughout town and spread it out and stuff.
So I'd be interested to know the cost difference between the material you decide on and actually paving over.
Okay.
And it also suggests that in planning a process to accommodate, follow through with everything, that some of the roads that are held captive between two paved roads that are heavily trafficked be considered for paving. Example, the.
What road?
Vic. Right? Because there's traffic from the neighborhood coming down that road. You know, so I'm suggesting there's probably other situations like that in town, too. I mean, this new neighborhood's coming in down here. Is there a plan to pave to that neighborhood?
Not right now, no. So I can answer that question for you. So several meetings ago, we discussed Henson, and we discussed Henson from Star Street to connect to Winter, Winter's Landing. And we made the decision to pave that section of road because of exactly what you said. It's in between two paved sections, plus that road gets a lot of traffic with school traffic, with golf carts dropping kids off, kids coming down, or cars dropping people off or cutting it, using it as a cut-through. So I will tell you from experience, in the morning when I walk my dog at eight, seven forty-five o'clock, it's just a, 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 from the, into some amount of cars that, that come down through there. So we made the decision to get three qualified bids, which we did receive, and we're in the process of Public Works vetting those bids. And we'll select a contractor to pave a twelve-foot-wide path or section, which is the size of our lane, all the way down to connect the two areas. If that is successful, I think we would look at other, I mean, talk about it, but I think we would definitely be looking at other areas.
Oh, is there, is there a committee or some group that's managing this thing, or is it just?
No, it's not. That. No, there's not. There's not a, an official committee to sit there and say, let's, let's talk about what roads to pave. Some roads are, some roads, I can tell you, have no issues. Sandy roads, for example, have no issues. There are other roads like Vic and what you're, you're on that have some issues.
That whole neighborhood.
I, I, everybody here, I don't know if we want to visit that with a committee or anything like that, or just do it on a.
I mean, just from an efficiency standpoint, budgeting and scheduling standpoint.
Yeah, money, money isn't, money is, money does matter. So, so, so the, the cost to pave that section of Henson from Star to, to thing is roughly about twenty-three thousand dollars.
I guess if we don't have a in-game in mind, plan for it, it's going to be less than expedient as it might be. Possibly.
I would tell you, if you had that survey, my personal opinion was the survey did not get. I would feel more comfortable, this has been, you know, all the years we've been here, John, this has been. I would feel comfortable. Try to, you know, map it out. Public Works, they're busy with a whole lot of.
Would you sit on that committee?
Would.
We'll discuss that, thank you. All right, anyone else from the public? You did.
She did.
You did. Anyone else have any other comments? Nope, all right, here, now we'll close the public forum and bring it back to the town manager.
The only thing I wanted to go over is that I provided copies of the charter over there. You guys all have a copy of the charter in front of you. Since we're starting the Charter Review Committee, I encourage the public to take a look at it, and you can reach out to one of the Charter Review Committee members or myself, and, and just let us know what your concerns are, what you might want us to talk about as, as we start those meetings up. So we'll be putting more information out on the website as well, but this is to get you started, and we also mentioned it at Meet Your Mayor last week.
Yeah. Nothing for Chief? No? Abby? Lou?
Wow. Lou, you should have a.
Oh, you should have a, should have a whole list of stuff. Okay, all right, so Commissioner Keller, anything from you?
I just want to say that I wanted to thank everybody for all the wonderful, warm wishes on our town page, and I'm looking forward to serving the town, and I'm, I'm glad that it was a very positive response to my appointment.
Congratulations.
Just one quick mention, I mentioned before about the Florida League of Cities and their financial portfolios. I know, I can't remember his name, I think it's Craig had met with Andy. I know he met with them, set up a meeting to come to the town to talk about all the Florida League of Cities, cities, financial portfolio options. Did you know any, anything about that? If not, I can reach out to.
If, if he met with them, I'm not a.
No, he, he, they just had a conversation to set up a meeting to talk to them.
I have no idea.
Okay, I'll reach out to Florida League of Cities. I know we had, oh, okay, okay, you, sorry, Gabby, yes. I just don't want us to miss out on that opportunity, just to hear some of the things they have to offer to us as a financial entity.
Andy and I did meet with the Florida League of Cities, it wasn't Craig, it was somebody named Clay.
Yeah, Clay, yeah, Clay.
And somebody else, I think, I don't remember his name, but they told us about the property insurance. And they did mention getting with Craig for Andy to do so, to see what was furthering, what we could further with them. As of right now, we're just getting quotes on what property insurance they could provide us. They mentioned sending me what data they would need from me, I haven't received that yet, just to see for next year's renewal. But that meeting did go well, so.
Yeah, I just don't want us to miss out on the opportunity.
Yes, so we did meet with them, it was last week, last Thursday.
That's all I have.
Just a couple of things for me, Dirt Road was one, so thank you, John, off my list. The other thing that I've been working on for everyone, it recently, it's been, we've been talking cell towers and trying to get a cell tower in town to boost reception. What we found is we did a, a cell tower company has done a heat study map, and that heat study map basically shows that Oakland is a dead zone. From AT&amp;T, Verizon, to any of them, it's all red, so there's nothing here. Everything points out to the fifty, and, 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 and what they said is, as, as the day goes on, especially in the afternoons, when you get a lot of heavy traffic, people traveling, the signal gets even worse as the data's being used on there. So we are looking at locations to, to put that in there, and, and what we want to do is put it on town property. Because when you put it on town property, there's a revenue generation from putting that on town property from the town. And it is essentially however many carriers you carry on that, you know, you'll get revenue off of that as well. That's something that we're working on, so just stand by, hopefully to get it. I, I, I work from the house, I'd like to have cell and have, like, I don't like my TV glitches out as well when I lose signal. So that's, that's on the books, and then the, the agenda item I pulled off the meeting, just let you guys know, that was a, that was a, from Kimley Horn, who's our, one of our town engineers, and what they're studying, just, just so everybody's got open, open book here. They're studying the Tub Street corridor from the trail all the way down to Highway fifty, and we're looking at a, a streetscape improvement on that to make interest into the town, to allow for commercial growth there, through there and stuff, and kind of make it so when you come off of fifty, you enter a, a place of being, so that's kind of what we're working on. But I, I expect that probably in the next couple of weeks, and then they'll come in and discuss that with us as well. Oh, Mike, give me the mic. Push the green button, Mike. Can you hear me?
I just want to mention, we have a display right now at the Arts and Heritage Center, and they're actually going to be coming out. It's going to be on the twentieth of February from six to eight with Joe and David. And they're actually going to come out and talk about their artwork. These are two artists from Disney that have been there for years and years, or were with Disney for years. They're gonna kind of do some Q and A at the Arts and Heritage, so if you can make it out, that'd be great, we'd love to have you guys all over there.
Yeah, absolutely, I glanced at the exhibit, it's pretty cool. I know some people, we had a great turnout, the Meet the Mayor last Wednesday, so a lot of people got to experience that, but yeah, looking forward, looking forward to that. And. You're only one time, you're one and only turn, time to talk at a turn, so. We're just kidding you, the new boy tax, Lou, is what that is, so. All right, that's it for me, Joseph?
Right, if all hearts and minds are satisfied, let's adjourn at seven fifty five P.
Thank you, guys.